And would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clark, take the roll, please.
Do you have a roll?
Here.
Morsette?
Here.
O'Connell?
Here.
Rodamacher?
Here.
Wyland?
Here.
O'Malley?
Here.
Here.
At this point in our agenda, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present on any item that is not on the proposed agenda for this evening. Is there anyone that would like to address the council at this time? Anyone? Did I ask three times? One more time, anyone? Okay, let's go to the consent agenda.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of January 15th, 2007, and special meeting minutes of January 22nd, 2007, to approve claims for payment in the amount of $708,793.78, a detailed description is available in the clerk's office for inspection. To approve the issuance of regular operators licenses for the period February 6th, 2007 through June 30th, 2008, a detailed list is available in the clerk's office upon request. Place on file the quarterly reports of the city clerk, interim police chief, and the community access board minutes of January 23rd, 2007, and the joint library board minutes of January 8th, 2007. That is all.
What is your pleasure on the consent agenda?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Morsette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Rodamacher?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Let's go to the plan commission. Vacation or discontinuance as part of the dedicated right-of-way of Dominion Drive and South of Crestview Drive, former Exit 2 Drive, St. Cory Crossing, LLC and BV Properties. Resolution number 3-07.
There's a revised resolution, 3-07. What we're seeking tonight is the acceptance of a resolution or introduction of a resolution and also establishing the public hearing to be scheduled for the 19th of March at 6:55 PM. If that is, if that's approved, also the common counsel could consider a first reading of resolution 3-07, or they could delay that until after the public hearing. Catherine has been working with the legal counsel for the two parties that petitioned due to conditions that the plan commission recommended regarding retention of easements, an agreement that private property owners would be responsible for paying a repair of the, within that easement area of private improvements, and then also rededication of any right-of-way back if, for whatever reason, and particularly if exit, the former Exit 2, which I called Exit 1 and 1/2 at the plan commission meeting, would, might be reinstated. I've taken a look at that particular issue, talked to some traffic engineers, looks like we could deal with probably within the existing right-of-way at Crestview Drive. If there'd be any need for additional right-of-way, it'd be very minimal, in my opinion, so the chance of that having to occur would be pretty minimal. So we're asking for scheduling the public hearing, and also if you wish to, you could give consideration to the first reading of resolution 3-07.
Somebody to suspend the rules or have first reading.
I'll move for first reading and set the public hearing date for March 19th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, comments, or questions?
I just have a couple of comments. The resolution will look a little bit different based on the agreement. We're going to attach the agreements as exhibits, and I had not understood that there wasn't an easement existing right now, so just the wording is going to be a little bit different. The substance will be the same in terms of the actual road, the people involved, and what happens, but just so that's clear.
Jenny, for my clarification, you're just asking that we move this into the plan commission for public hearings, so people have their voice.
No, the common counsel will hold a public hearing on March 19th.
Right.
And then they can act on the resolution at that time if they choose to. The plan commission looked at this, and this has changed a little bit in that the entire length of the old Exit 2 in front of Perkins and the communications being requested to be vacated, not just the part in front of Perkins, okay? So we want, the plan commission will be looking at that particular issue further.
And the neighbors are all on board?
The resolution, or the petitions for vacation that were received were only from the two adjacent properties to the south and from nobody else. Now, in the review process, if, what state law says, if the adjacent properties, if sufficient numbers of adjacent properties would oppose the petition for vacation, that could force the common counsel into a two-thirds vote in vacating that area.
The hearing will be published in the paper, and there's statute notices required by statute. The fact is, they didn't have enough neighbors to meet the petition requirements, but the statute allows the counsel to consider it if the counsel wants to, and the plan commission looked at it and thought it makes some sense. Well, they recommended that it proceed to the council.
And I think the hearing is something we always go through.
Oh, yeah.
Hear a lot of comments and pro and con at that time.
There's, yeah, there's no commitment by the common counsel, it has to be agreed to, it's just starting the procedure.
We have a motion of second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motions carried. Let's go down to finance committee. Honors, Drew, and Associates Engineering Rates for 2007. The recommendation from finance is to accept the engineering rates with the increase of 2%.
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motions carried.
Let's go down to six. Resolution authorizing the heirs and associates to solicit bids for $2,720,000 general obligation promissory notes, series 2007 of the City of Hudson, resolution number 2-07. I think we're going to have an executive summary here, or by Sean.
Betty's handing around the pre-sale report, and I believe that a draft version of that was in your council packets that you probably got late last week. I'm going to go through this, and as the mayor said, in an executive summary format, but as I do so, please feel free to stop me and ask any questions as we, as we move along. The second exhibit is just a indicator of where outstanding interest rates are for this type of a debt instrument that we can reference as well. If I can get everybody to go to the third page of the handout, which is exhibit one, I just want to reference what's included in the finance plan. There's two items for your consideration as part of the overall general obligation promissory note being proposed for the financing. First is the 2007 capital projects, which I think, Betty, the last meeting that Brian and I were at in December, you went over a view of that capital projects list totaling about 1.8 million this year. And what we've talked with Betty about is, at the same time that there will be a financing for those 2007 projects, it probably makes some sense to look at refinancing and restructuring opportunities at the same time. And what you'll see on this sheet is the total issue, which we expect to mean, and this is exhibit one, $2,720,000, and then you'll see a column in blue and a column in red, two columns in blue, one in red. The columns in blue represent what the city will be paying back with your debt levy. And so we have the financing for the capital projects in there, and then we also have the restructuring and refinancing of the 2000, I think it was originally $1,750,000 general obligation notes. About, a little more than half of that issue was the responsibility of the city's general debt levy, and that's in blue here. There's a balloon payment due in a couple of years, and it's outstanding at interest rates of over 5%. The current market is around more, around 4% to 4.25%. What you'll also see in red is the portion of that 2,000 issue that was the responsibility of your tax increment district number four fund. We are not proposing that you refinance that, but we are proposing that you pay that off in full. As we talked about in December, TID 4 Fund is a very strong fund right now, and you are in a position to pay that debt off in full at this point, and so we're recommending that. What you would be financing, though, again, is the 2007 capital projects and then the re-financing of the remaining share of that 2,000 note issue. If we can go to exhibit two, the repayment schedule for the 2,007 notes is listed on exhibit two, and we're proposing that the issue be fully amortized over a 10-year period, so there will be no balloon payments. We'd expect to have this completely paid in 10 years. The interest rate that Brian and I used for preliminary purposes is probably about a quarter of a percent above where the market is, so we're trying to be conservative at this time. The finance plan would be to come back at your March 5th meeting with competitive proposals, and the lowest interest cost proposal would be the one we'd recommend for the city to consider at that time. All of this would be expected to be then repaid by the city's debt levy. And actually, if I can get you to go to exhibit three, we can look at, and I apologize that the numbers are, get to be kind of small on this page, where I'd like to direct your attention is really the two columns on the far right side of the page. Really what we're focusing in on here is the total debt levy for the city inclusive of this 2,007 note issue. This year, you were at about 1.1 million. We're expecting with this issue, the total debt levy, so all issues that you include in your budget, be approximately 1.2 million next year, and it stays approximately at that level for the next couple of years, and then falls thereafter, over time, okay? And also to tie into the exhibit, some of the exhibits that we talked about at the December meeting, if I can get you to go to exhibit four, while we've been working on this with Betty, we've also been looking further out than just what the city is doing this year, trying to take this year's financing plan in the context of what's to come potentially down the road. And this exhibit four includes projections on some, some other financings going into the future, so 2008, 9, 10, 11. And that's inclusive of the proposed, and I know you're probably still in the discussion phase on the public safety and fire stations, that's included in here, and then an estimation of about 2 million a year thereafter. That is not by any means what the council is committed to at this point or considering at this point, but instead of just focusing on a one-year financing, we've worked on this with Betty, we want to look forecast and make sure we're taking into where you might be in the future while we're putting this package together at this time.
Okay.
Okay?
Makes sense. Any questions so far?
The last exhibit, and I'll just go through this real briefly, exhibit five, one of the restrictions on the city's ability to use general obligation debt with, which this note issue would be, promissory note issue would be, and just so the council understands, the general obligation pledge is that you pledge to levy taxes to pay this back. That's really what it is, and it's the strongest pledge and credit that you can offer to the market for your debt. The state does limit that to 5% of your equalized value, your entire equalized value of the city. So I just wanted to update you briefly, the City of Hudson is in fine shape when it comes to this. You have a very strong equalized value. It's about 1.4 billion right now. You've used general obligation debt very conservatively to date, and after this issue, you'd have 64 million remaining in borrowing capacity, so you're in a very strong position. I don't expect this ever to be a problem for the city.
But an M or a B? What did you say?
You have, you have 1.4 billion, but you have 64 million in capacity after this issue, which I'm sure is more than you'd ever need.
Okay.
Okay? Last thing, if I can get you to go back to the second page, I just want to give the whole council the timeline that we're proposing. We're talking about the review of the plan today. The official statement, which is a prospectus that details this finance plan, as well as a lot of general financial information about the city, will be sent to you and also sent to potential bidders on the issue the week of February 23rd. The other thing that we will do as a part of the process is update the city's outstanding bond rating. The City of Hudson currently has a very impressive A1 rating, and we'll be looking to, at a minimum, get that rating confirmed and, and keep it at that level, and we're always looking to see if there's potential to get that upgraded. Certainly, the better rating you get, it just translates into lower interest rates, so the best we can do there, we're always striving for. And then we'll be taking the bids on March 5th, and those will come back for the council's review, and then the estimated closing date on the issue is March 21st, and that's when, just like your, say, your home mortgage would close, it's very similar to that, and the funds change hands on that date. There is a resolution at the, the back end of the pre-sale report. It is a resolution authorizing us to move forward with the creation of that official statement and soliciting bids for your March 5th meeting. But if there's any questions on the report or on that resolution, I'd be happy to answer those at this point.
Well, the thing I like about this is that there's no balloon payments in there, which years ago used to be a real problem, because trying to figure out where you're going to get the money for that balloon, it's just like any home mortgage, was usually a real problem. What I like about here is that we're consistent, and it's not a yo-yo effect, and you guys have been doing a great job of keeping us in that light.
One question about timing. Sean, you mentioned March 5th, when these bonds are let and they're sold. If I remember correctly, don't you need a special meeting or not to, isn't there a time factor? We need to ratify that within a certain amount of time? Do we need to schedule now a special meeting in March?
We should be able to do this issue at your March 5th meeting, no time constraints at all. What you might be thinking about is, some of the general obligation bond issues require initial resolutions and a 30-day time period to run before that. This is a promissory note issue, little different statutory authority, and that we're not subject to that in this issue.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have before us resolution 2-07.
I believe we need to suspend the rules?
Yep. For a second?
Do we need to?
Second.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, let's get it going.
Because February 23rd would be...
If we need a special meeting, we can call it later on. I mean, why call it now if we don't need it?
You have a second.
Do we have a second? Any other questions or comments or?
Well, I, I stress that I, I think that we're okay with suspending the rules on this, because Sean has been very good at really just telling us what he told us before on December 18th. The figures are all basically the same.
Right.
The inclusion of a possible fire station slash police station or whatever. You went through that with us on December 18th, there's really, he's done a very good job of telling us the same thing he told us before. So we've already covered this.
Yeah, he's done a good job.
So right now, we're just looking at approving the bids.
Right, and then we'll be approving the actual issuance?
You're just approving?
Approving the solicitation of bids, yes.
Correct.
And then the issuance on March 5th.
March 5th would be when you actually approve the bids.
All in favor to suspend the rules?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, motions carried.
We've passed resolution 2-07, authorizing heirs and associates to solicit bids for $2,720,000.
Second. Any discussion at this point? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motions carried, and let's go down to unfinished business.
Kind of a new term. amend Chapter 99.6 of Municipal Code Regarding Feeding of Wild Animals, Ordinance Number 1-07. First reading was 11507, and it does include four-legged squirrels.
And chomper swans.
Move to approve, to, to adopt the resolution.
No ordinance.
Ordinance, excuse me, yes. I'm forgetting. Ordinance 1-07.
Is there a second?
One second.
Carl, I believe, right? Any questions or comments? Think we had them last time. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motions carried.
Let's go to B. Consider updating the plans and specs for the bathhouse reciting project and advertising for bids. Jim's going to give us, again, a little executive summary of how we came to that conclusion or proposal.
Yeah, let's make sure I got all my important stuff here. Last Wednesday, the 31st, we had a, meeting was had with the mayor, the attorney, Paul Rodamacher, myself, regarding various options with respect to, you know, the bathhouse, the Riverwalk picnic shelter, et cetera, various, we discussed, you know, the option of trying to proceed, award the bid as it was, or considering rebidding. After much discussion, it seemed that the, it was in the best interest of the city, we were best protected by rebidding. It eliminated any positioning of us to say that, you know, there was some unfair advantage to somebody, and it was just, the feeling was that by rebidding, we give everybody a level playing ground or playing field and see where it goes, potentially the bids may come in lower, which would offset some of the additional costs that we would see from bonus draw. I talked with Dennis prior to the meeting, and I think between the two of us, we have a better understanding, and I think some of his, some of those numbers are definitely going to come down. So I guess, go to the memo, that what we're doing is request authorization for, I guess it says updating plans and specifications, basically it's updating the specifications, but we do need to, you know, the plans or whatever do need to get redone or reprinted for the Riverwalk picnic shelter and the bathhouse reciting. Secondarily, we're requesting approval to proceed with plans and specs for extending sewer and water to the picnic shelter, and then authorize staff to proceed with preparation plans and specs for the security gates for the picnic shelter.
Let's take them...
Actually, I think, yeah, I think we, the way, the agenda, we kind of got...
Let's go to B. Consider updating the plans and specs for the bathhouse reciting.
Right.
Project.
Move for approval?
One second.
Just one, one thing you left out, Jim, is that by rebidding this, these products all together at one time, is that there's a contractor opportunity to come in and rebuild the whole package versus individual products, and that could, that could help out as well as far as the loan costs, so that a contractor knows that they're going to be, you know, be in the same area, using the same equipment, so they don't have to keep, you know, worry about going back and forth with, you know, sharing resources, so...
Plus, it requires the original person who gets that particular bid to go out and do a secondary bid and, or have a secondary bid, doing it the old way. By combining everything, it looks like same people at the same time will be executing the job, which you said better than I did, I'm sorry.
So I had a question, you said earlier that the rebid cost is $3,600, do you think that'll be less?
I think that'll be less, I know Dennis and I talked about that, and...
Right, we were, at the time that I was prepared, it was under the assumption that the security gating, our scope, that it's not that cost, it'll be somewhere less, and the reverse pulls are not. That's our cost, it's not a cost of the city. We'll approve that, but I suspect these are better. So, so what, what...
In Dennis's defense, what happened was the architect prepared it, he was at continuing education, and it went out under his signature, and I think, so those consequently, those numbers are high after, after they've been examined better.
So we're, we're voting on $2,600, not $3,600, is that correct?
Right.
All right.
Need a motion?
You had it.
Or did we have it?
Yeah, we motioned in a second.
Any other discussion or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, motions carried. Okay, the next one is, consider updating the plans and specs for the Riverwalk picnic shelter and advertising for bids.
Move for approval?
Second. Discussion.
Quick question for Dennis, or for Jim. In your discussions with Dennis, can we expect the same consideration on lowering of the cost of bids?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we're coming down from $4,300?
Right.
Okay.
Two, two, one. So what are we voting on? What's that mean? $3,100.
Yeah.
Right.
$3,100. I have a question regarding feasibility of spending $3,100 on this bid, because, and Dennis and I spoke about this this afternoon, building in engineering costs, and he's got some indirect costs additionally on the bottom, it seems that if we combine items three and four, which is the picnic shelter and utilities, I recognize that the utilities are a separate agenda item here, but if you will allow me to speak to them for just a moment...
Go ahead.
Because there's no point in building a picnic shelter without the utilities, and there's no point in installing the utilities without a picnic shelter building. All of this would also call for the security gating, and that number, I've been advised by Betty, that $45,000 number is incorrect, it should be $25,000. Now, when you add in the engineering costs, engineering, legal, administrative costs, that $25,000 actually adds $9,375, let's just round it down to 34, 34 grand. When you put those three items together, you're at $534,000, and that would mean we would need an additional $294,000, if I can, I'll round it up to 300, we'd need close to $300,000. My question is this, should we expend the money to put out, to do the specs and put this out for bids, when, I certainly don't have an idea where we have an extra $300,000, and if somebody else does, I'd be certainly willing to hear that, but why would we bid for a project that it would seem to me we can't afford to build?
Betty, have you got some numbers on that?
I have some numbers. My numbers are based on the last time that we met, we ran through this stuff, based on what we have.
This really tells us what the approximate bids might be and where the money is, and whether or not we have the money or don't have the money.
I think the difference is that we all have sat down with Dennis Cost where, where I have...
Well, I'm, we just talked on the phone.
And actually discussed the, the total cost of the engineering, or I have estimated the cost of engineering and other costs. One of the things that we had talked about was limiting the engineering expenses, and I'm not sure if Dennis is aware of that, but there were some of these projects where we had talked about limiting the engineering expenses, especially for inspection. So at the time that we met, this is based on the best information I had available. So the things that are actually coming up on this, we kind of had the project based on our estimates before, funded with different donations, with different trust funds, with bond proceeds, reallocation of bond proceeds. We had the lighting funded, we had the park shelter funded. The water in the sewer came in higher than we were planning when we did the preliminary funding, so we have a little additional funding to find for that, and also for the security gates, or actually, the security gates are in the 2007 budget, so we're okay with that. The big one is the bathhouse, we're short on that project and what the bond proceeds are, we're going up $420,000, we're really short on that one, plus we don't have the security gates budgeted for that. We're talking with the partners, and Don Gilbert, there is the alternative bid on the park shelter to reduce that if, if the council wants it so considered. So there are different things to do, but I think looking at the project as a whole, we'll know if we're short $60,000 or if we're short $30,000, where we can find some savings. I'll have the books closed for 2005, I'll have interest allocated, we'll know where we might have some additional funding to cover, making sure the council decides to move forward with this.
Can I ask a question on kind of, on your same note is, okay, he says $300,000, and you're saying $60,000?
Thirty.
Thirty?
Well, either 60 or 30, she mentioned.
I'm saying, who knows? And, and I think that's the big problem we have with this project, one bit on $30,000 short, the next one on $60,000 short, depending upon where it's coming in at.
But according to this, you're at 38.6, right?
38,000... Thirty-eight thousand short for the water and sewer estimate, and approximately $43,000 short for the beach.
Well, true, but we're talking about the Riverwalk one now.
Right.
Okay?
That's limiting the engineering cost to what we had originally talked about. But I know that, for instance, on the park shelter, we have a $20,000 estimate in engineering. We've already spent $18,000 and there's been inspections yet. So, I think some of these fees are going to be a little bit different. I think once we get a whole handle on the whole project altogether, we can probably sit down with Dennis and come up with better figures to say we can fund it.
Well, consideration of the plans and specs that are going out for bid, chances are we may be in a better position monetarily because there's so much excess work out there right now. That was the original intent, right?
Combining them, you mean?
Yeah.
I understand that.
And, and maybe lower bids than we did originally because of that same-
And that, that could easily happen. Betty and I did talk just before the meeting that her figures and Dennis's differ in some cases considerably, and Dennis's figures are considerably higher. And now Betty just mentioned before the meeting that there was some agreement, verbal agreement before, that we would cap engineering fees on this project at $14,000. Well, that was for inspections. We've already spent $18,000 with no inspections. If we throw in the 14, we're at $32,000 for engineering, not $20,000.
Where did the agreement come for?
Betty, I'll have to refer to you. You, you mentioned it to me.
It's come from public works working with Angela. We had come up with not to exceed. We had sat down and talked about not to exceed.
And to complete the triangle between you and Jim and Dennis, where are we now? Is that, is that still?
I don't think in fairness to Dennis, he wasn't in on the conversations. And I wasn't either. I was told that I think we probably need to sit down and discuss it again.
Whatever we agreed to previously by Angela, by-
Yeah, we have written-
That's what I figured you'd say.
A proposal, so.
So, the triangle is complete. We're not going to know the true cost of this project until we get the bids back. Is that what-
Except we are in agreement on one thing. We don't have enough money.
No, we're not in agreement there, yeah.
Well, Betty just agreed with that. She's the woman who controls the money.
But if we're going to, if we're going to collectively go out after the new bids and specs, let's wait until we get the bottom line, and then we can make the decision whether or not we're going to do it. But I think the main approach that we had before was that we were approving things one by one without ever looking at the total. Now, this is going to give us a total which we can make a decision on of where the money's coming from and whether or not we want to go forth with that particular figure.
You had mentioned earlier that there was a concept to modify the shelter to make it cost less. Cost less, right? You said something earlier that, that there was an idea?
Well, I think there's been a lot of talk about, basically, do we need sewer and water out there? Should we just have satellites? Should we change the structure of the building itself? Many, many different comments, but I don't think that this council has ever really decided on modifying that particular-
I was just wondering if there was a concept, maybe we get in two bids, one for the simpler concept, one for the more expensive. Because if that $253,000 can be cut down by close to $82,000, you can cover all these projects. You know, because you've got, and now I'm adding the beach house back in. We've got $43,000 there, $38,000 there. If we can modify the design here, we can cover all these projects. That's-
Well, that's true, but-
You know, if there's any way to get a couple of options.
We've gone through the process of the, the board really recommending this particular one.
Yeah, that's true.
And that's what we should be considering.
Okay.
And Lee, we are looking at six, I think six, maybe it's five, whatever, different options on the sewer and water. And that range is, is wide as far as estimated cost, so.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
Well, there's one other item, especially with respect to the beach house reciting, is the 20, 20, 23,000 for the security gates. What my recommendation was for that was if that's, you know, any remotely close to a deal killer, budget that in 2008.
Well, some of the biggest comments I've gotten back are, you know, security, safety, vandalism, so, I mean, this is one of the key issues to say if we're going to build it, let's build it so it can't be torn apart some-
Sure, I agree, yeah. But let's go through the process. Let's see what the bottom line is. And let's vote on the bottom line when we get that particular figure in.
Right.
So, I guess to Scott's point, he's saying, should we even go out for bid because we can't afford the whole project? What I'm hearing is that choosing different options, it might be in budget if we go out and get the right bids.
Well, it might be immature to take that particular viewpoint at this point.
Okay.
The overall reality is we don't know, which is the reason to go out for bids. However, every informed guess that we have, every informed opinion we have, and Betty and I have been in accord on this, that we don't seem to have enough money to do this project, therefore, why would we entertain bids if we, in fact, don't have enough money to do it?
Unless we get a lower bid than we had before.
That's, that's a good point.
Yeah.
I, I think that since we do have quite a few figures in from Dennis, we know pretty much how much the sewer and water's going to cost. It's not what it is on this sheet. It's $191,221.
Well, that's true. I mean-
Which is almost, you know, $15,000 more than on this sheet. We know that we're going to be in the red deeper than this sheet shows, and this sheet shows us already in the red.
Well, one other thing I'd like to see added here is there's obviously going to be an ongoing maintenance cost that's not considered here. I don't know what budget that comes out of, but I think we need to keep that in mind as we're moving forward and making decisions.
That comes out of Public Works and Park Board. They'll have to figure that into their future budgets.
I think that-
Is now a appropriate time for public comment?
Absolutely. If, if the council members don't have additional questions and will, or comments. Priscilla? I want you up to the podium.
Priscilla Wyeth, 611 12 Oaks Lane. As you read my letter to the editor and the messages I sent to you both directly and as a reply to Paul Rodmacher, I vigorously oppose this project. I also strongly support initiatives on the part of the city of Hudson to improve every park it can and to add others as it can. But this project seems to me very poorly considered. Why, especially right now, when I listen to you talk about sending out, spending money to develop plans and specs for a project you really don't understand the scope of. And to say that the departments somehow have to magically come up with maintenance money when the costs of maintenance do not appear to have been laid out or considered. As I mentioned in my communication, the dike is in the flood area. The storms are going to knock it. You've got boats are going to drive into it. Why would you put such expensive investment in an area that you cannot protect? As it is now, the bathrooms in the bath house have not been open for a couple of years because of vandalism. They are not likely to be opened anytime soon.
That's not true.
I had understood that from a fellow-
Well, understand it from the guy who locks the door, right there.
Okay, I'd understood that from a former city council member. I don't, as someone who's served on the facilities committee for the school board, I have some awareness and experience with managing big disasters and planning for big projects. I'm also aware of dealing with personal liability lawsuits. And I think that the more we make the effort to improve that, that area that is difficult to protect and subject to weather and vandalism, the more we increase the city's exposure. These are the kinds of issues, maintenance and liability exposure, that I have not seen discussed in the paper. And as I understand, the park board does not create any minutes. And so, there is no indication of whether that has been-
We create minutes. Our park board creates minutes.
Well, they're not, I have not seen them publicized. I don't find them in the newspaper nor do I see them on cable. So, that's all I know, Paul. So, I just feel that it's, the, the, the full scope of the project has not been fully considered. And for the, the city to spend my money going out for bid on a project that is not fully considered seems to me very poor planning and very, very poor governing indeed.
Thank you for your comments.
I just would like to respond that the park board minutes are not published. We only publish the council minutes, but all the minutes of all the committees are available.
Available here at City Hall.
All you have to do is ask.
Yep.
Yes, please come up.
I'm Mary Bethler Beckey Mataya, and I'm from the North Hudson Plan Commission. And I'm not speaking for them, and I'm also a scholar, and I'm a community person. And the reason I'm here is, first, I did want to say that I think it's wonderful to have the kind of idealism and generosity that the board has to consider this project. And so, I applaud all of that. But I have some concerns that when we look at every summer, we have drownings out in that area. I'm concerned that we'll be encouraging swimming in an area that's not safe without any help. As a parent, I go and go to the beach house and bring my kids down there and to the wonderful Rotary Park where the playground is. And there's not bathrooms there. And those places, it seems, you know, that there's so much cost to building something, but then to maintain it and to really staff it and to take care of it is a whole nother consideration. And so, when I look at the community, we have some real challenges ahead of us in terms of schools and in terms of the library, in terms of, there were commitments to doing bike paths, and there's a damn bridge that could be fixed and we could use it. But these things haven't been done, and so to do another big project seems idealistic and wonderful. But, but do we have the funds as a whole community to support all these needs? And the other thing is, when I look at a water and sewer line, I'm sorry, I'm shaking. But I always look at endpoint user. And, and generally, when we send them out, you know, you try and have as many endpoint users as you can. This one only has one, and it's not a regular one. And so, when you look at that cost per footage, it's a lot of cost per footage with not a lot of end users. And so, it seems like if you wanted to put out temporary shelters or temporary porta-potties or something, then when the political will or there's trouble, you can withdraw those without having invested, all that. And finally, a security gate, a huge security gate that might keep out pedestrians or cars or whatever, seems like not a very welcoming thing for right on our beachfront. So, to me, it seems like it would be really wonderful to take all this great idealistic energy, this generosity as a group, and take care of the beach house and, and, and get bathrooms in that area where we have a wonderful Rotaryian playground. Get the bike trails that the people have asked for for a long time because North Hudson would like to work with you on it. So, thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Mary Prinaville. I'm a Hudson resident. And I'm also grateful for the work of the Rotary and everybody involved on the, on the riverfront project. I'm, I'm excited about benches. I imagine planters filled with flowers. And, and I'm a little less stressed about a picnic area at the end of the walk, at the end of the Riverwalk than, than Mary Beth is. I, I think they're great ideas. I am really, really environmentally bothered by the idea of a sewer line going two-thirds of the way across our, our National Scenic Riverway to the, to the island. And I, and I do think there is a need for good public restrooms, but it's not out there. It's, I want, I'd like to see the existing facilities at the bath house and fix it up first. I think that's where families take their kids. I think that's where the greatest recreational use is. And I think that's where the greatest accessibility is. I spend a lot of time on the river and the riverfront and the pathway and the dike road, rowing and running and walking. And I walk a lot. My husband thinks I'm down there more than anybody else. And I'm here to tell you, that walk to the end of the dike is far. And I just don't see picnickers on foot heading out there, you know, unless we're going to give them little electric cars or something. But, but the heart of the lakefront to me, heart of Lakefront Park is the bath house and the pavilion area goes all the way, the pathway, all the way from the boathouse down to the great new playground area. But it's at that center where people walk out. They walk out at night. They walk for exercise. But they don't necessarily walk all the way to the end. And, and I don't think we, we expect facilities out there. I just think we should, we should fix up what we have. When I came here, when I, when I moved here in '96, shortly after that, there were great new bath house facilities. People that came to visit me went to the beach with me. We'd read down there, and, and the restrooms were available. I got really sad when I read the article by the woman who said there used to be hu, lots more huge trees down there because I didn't know that. But I know what was there, and I know that what we have there, we should fix. And I know this speaks to the next item on the agenda, but I'm, but I'm, I was in Florida when I looked online and saw that, that there would be a proposal for a referendum, and, and I think that's the right, the right way to go. I think people have a right to say how this much money should be spent. And I think they'll turn out just like they did for the last elementary school referendum.
Excuse me, but what did you have in mind that we aren't fixing?
I don't think we're fixing up the existing bath houses first. I don't think we're doing, are we doing the-
Well, we just made a bid to recite it.
No, the, the public, the restrooms there. The restrooms that have been, the restrooms at the, at the bath house-
At the beach.
At the beach.
Yeah. What's wrong with them?
They're not open.
Jim?
They're, they're open.
They're open all the time.
Yeah.
Well, they're locked when we row in the morning. What time are they open? And they're all-
Probably, I don't know, they open at eight o'clock, nine o'clock.
Well, we'll take a look.
I can honestly say to you that at times, when I check, that we don't, yeah.
Eleven o'clock, I suppose. Probably we debate open the beach, so they're probably open at 11, and then they run till, I think, seven.
Yeah.
And the ones down at the other end where the playground is, the ones attached to the machine shed, are those also open?
There are porta-potties down there and those-
I mean, the, the, yeah.
The restrooms there typically are open at six or 6:30. Because they're open when the, when the guys shop, not the shop.
That's what I wanted to-
Well, I, you know, and, okay.
That's what I wanted to clarify because-
That's what I wanted to clarify too, because I can tell you-
If they aren't, we want to make sure that they are open.
You know, I know where every public, where every restaurant, I can, or every restroom facility, I didn't think I'd be here talking about bathrooms, but I know where they all are because I, I've looked for them, and I have ne, I have never been able to get into those. They're, they've been locked.
Well, we, thank you for your comment.
But either way, I hate to see that sewer line go all the way out there.
Can I ask why, why are you opposed to that?
Construction, the construction on the river, it's a very delicate area.
You got to take the podium if you're going to make some comments.
Go ahead, Mary Beth.
Of course, you're, you're used to that.
I'm, I'm sorry. Just, it's a very delicate area when you're, if you do construction along that dike and out to the thing, it's a, all the construction runoff is going to go straight into the river. And it's, so it's, it's going to be difficult to haul the equipment out there. It's going to be difficult to, to do something without, without runoff into the river. Many of the damage to the river comes from runoff. I, I, my background is, is on environmental projects and stuff. So, I was helped volunteer on the scenic river resolutions and things. So, I, I bring that also, that concern for the river itself.
Jim, can you respond to that? Jim, or no?
I can say something. Growing up down there, you know, they use those islands as, as a bathroom as it is. So, if you're concerned about that stuff going into that water, the fix is putting something out there for them to use because it's all over the islands as it is. And it's going directly into the river.
Well, the amount of any type of runoff they would get from the construction of sewer and water, the recommendation is to sock cut centered down the parallel with the center joint to bury the sewer and water and then repave, place concrete over that. Given that, any type of responsible construction, if you've got, you know, you're going to have virtually nil for runoff off of that. The construction out at the end of the dike would have, be no different than any construction going anywhere else. You'd have silt fence up to prevent runoff out there. So, I mean, I guess I'm, on, on the list of issues with respect to construction of this that I'm concerned with, the, you know, having an issue with runoff is, is not high on the list.
Well, let's see if we're even going to do it.
This is true.
You know, let's get the bids in and, yes?
After my letter appeared, I was contacted by about half a dozen residents who said that they felt very strongly that they supported my position. But one of them was a boater, and he pointed out the fact that when he asked his fellow boaters after, after seeing the letter, whether they would think it was a great idea to have a bathroom on the river that they could use. With one voice, they said, fantastic. It would be just wonderful. Point being that not only do we get the- Point being that not only do we get the human waste that's there casually, but then we start with the bathroom having intentful usage. Don't worry, on our way down to thus and such, we'll stop at the Hudson Island and use their bathroom and then we'll continue on down. Well, the people pull their boats up. So, it's, uh, you know, we're just asking actually to increase the load in that area by focusing it and by making it an invitation, a public area where people are welcome to go.
And that's one reason why the DNR offered a grant to help build this, the facility. What's that people would stop in with the bathroom there?
Then I would also ask the city to investigate having the DNR make a commitment to long-term operation and maintenance of that. Because the issue is that there's several issues and, and the issue of maintenance has simply not been analyzed to a way that I feel satisfied. And the construction costs alone keep going up. I just think that, uh, that this issue, this has not been very well thought through from, for a community that is as forward-thinking as we are.
Well, Priscilla, I can assure you in four years of, of reviewing this project that items such as that have been and continue to be discussed.
That's nice to hear. When I, when I hear said that the council, the commit, the departments are just going to have to find the money for maintenance, that's what makes me concerned.
We didn't say they had to find the money. Leaves us questioning where the money was coming from.
My name is Don Masak and I'm from Hudson. First, I'd like to thank the Rotary Club. And I, I believe that's not been adequately done publicly. I think they've done a fantastic job. Their members and leaders have been exemplary in providing not only this project, but many other projects over the years in Hudson. They're very, uh, credit to our community. I do believe, however, that four years ago, Paul, as you suggested, they didn't really contemplate that this project was going to cost over half a million dollars. When they made a pledge of $50,000, I suspect that they believed that that would cause, would cover a significant portion of it, not 10% of it. And I believe that it's, it's bad practice, a bad precedent, bad policy for the city to be, in effect, pushed into building a project when, because a popular club has contributed 10% of its value or something less than that. The plan, uh, and the seeming urgency for its adoption seems to be motivated not by a genuine urgent need for the product, but rather by the mere fact that there's some money available for it. It's a little like a teenager with a couple of bucks in his pocket burning a hole in his pocket. I'm concerned about the cost. I'm concerned about the return on investment for this project. Half a million dollars could be spent in many ways and ways that may be much more beneficial to the citizens and taxpayers of Hudson. We have many more pressing needs. I'm further and more concerned, however, about the public safety issues involved. There's a general lack of law enforcement on the end of the dike and on the islands. I believe that a pavilion built there will be an attractive nuisance and may exacerbate rather, uh, the rather lawless situation that exists out there today. I'm also concerned about the track record and the performance of the park board in protecting their properties. Those are our tax dollars. I understand that you've approved bids and, or rejected a bid for something in the neighborhood of $120,000 to re-site the bathhouse. $120,000 because vandals tear off the siding and use it for firewood on the beach. Until I see a plan for comprehensive management of the parks and future development of the parks, I can't be supportive of building something else for vandals to destroy. Others have mentioned the cost, the security, the security of the utility lines and the pollution problems. I see no problem with the council moving forward and, and requesting bids for the related projects here, but for the reasons I've stated and the pervasive criticism I've heard of this project, I believe it should be rejected entirely or at least placed on the April ballot, as you're going to discuss later, as an information referendum. I don't think the city does enough, I don't think the council does enough in terms of soliciting public opinion. You have a website. We have great electronic capabilities in this community. There is no reason why issues like this and others can't be put on the web for comment. However, we have a convenient, no-cost way of getting public comment, soliciting public comment on this one, and that's the referendum ballot coming up in April. And I heartily suggest that you use that and that you listen carefully to what the citizens have to say about this project.
I would also suggest that you attend a couple of, uh, of the meetings that, uh, that, uh, we have as far as the park board is concerned. And you'll find that it's a very dedicated group, that they do a lot of planning.
With all due respect, Mr. Mayor, they may do plenty of planning, but there is no way for the citizenry to know anything about it because they do not publish...
Oh, yes, there is, by attending the meetings.
They don't publish their minutes. They don't show them on television.
But they, they do publish the meeting men...
Not every citizen can attain, attend every meeting.
I understand that. But you certainly know wh- when they're having them.
I do, indeed.
Okay.
Don, may I ask one question? What exactly, what type of lawlessness is going on, on, at the end of the dike road?
Well, you know as well as I do, Paul, that there's a lot, there's a lot of drug use out there. There's a lot of underage drinking out there. There are boats camped overnight all weekend long, which is against the city ordinances. We have just acquired this last year a boat so that there could be police patrol out there, but to my knowledge, there hasn't been. Uh, camp buyers camping overnight, all kinds of things going out there that ought not to be going out there.
Chief, would you like to make a comment on that?
I'd like to have a chance to do a little bit of, uh, history outside of just off, off the cuff. Um, I know that there's problems out there to the extent of, of what's being said, depending on the time of the year and things like that, uh, yeah, there, there have been problems and we know of that.
Anyone else?
I do want to piggyback on that and saying that, uh, I've, I had Chief Larson and staff pull, um, how many calls and so forth that the police department's been involved in the last five years. And we'll be discussing that at our public safety meeting on Wednesday morning as well at the park board meeting tomorrow night.
Very good. Anyone else want to make comments?
Well, it's something I, I, maybe everybody else knows this, but I didn't until I was researching this, is that I didn't realize that we as a city own those islands. Is that correct information?
Mm-hmm, it is.
I didn't realize that. Do you have anybody else?
We own some of them.
Okay, but, but the, but it's...
Some of them are technically just sandbars. That, you know, they are in the St. Gray River and I believe they're on our side of the, on the Wisconsin side of the channel.
Whatever frontage you have that aligns with that particular island is basically the owner of that particular...
I found that interesting because, you know, through the, some of these presentations, because that means that, you know, we, we kind of bounce off the discussion of, of safety and security, but we own the islands. That means that we're in charge of the safety and security on them, even if we can't access them.
And I'm not certain, I, I would need to do some checking on that because when that young lady drowned on what is commonly called Beer Can Island, the issue came forward and there was no definitive answer on whether that was an island that was owned by somebody or is it simply a sandbar in the river? And so, I mean, I don't know that it's a clear cut, we own specific things, but I can certainly check on that.
I'd like to find the answer to that because it's certainly going to play into our...
The DNR, I would assume, would be able to tell me the ownership, whether it's county-owned, city-owned, state-owned, what the deal is.
I guess part of it's because we just want the elevation of the rivers.
And most of it's dredging from the channels over the years.
But I will see what I can find out from the DNR.
And I, the reason I bring it up is because it, it ties directly with our safety committee and the decisions we're trying to make as far as what do we do about security out there.
Okay, I'll see what I can find out.
And you can take, pick that up. Okay, we have a motion in a second to consider updating the plans and specs for the Riverwalk Picnic Shelter and advertising for the bids. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion's carried. Let's go to new business. Consider changing the date for the second council meeting in February due to the spring primary election setup, which will be, uh...
The regular meeting...
Normally is the 19th. We want to have it on the 21st.
We normally have the day after the election if that works with everybody's schedule.
Somebody want to make a motion to that effect?
I move that we have our next council meeting on February 21st.
Or 2nd?
At 7:00 PM.
2nd.
Discussion? Guess we've had it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. The next one, review of the ordinance concerning the sexual offender residency restrictions. We're going to wait probably until the next meeting when Mr. O'Keefe can address, uh, the council on that subject. Uh, back page, consider an advisory referendum regarding the proposed Riverwalk Picnic Shelter Project and extending water and sewer service to the end of the dike road.
Move to die.
2nd?
2nd.
Discussion?
I think it would be kind of nice to hear what the proposal for the referendum is. And I'm going to ask for a little guidance from both Catherine and Nancy here because, as I understand from our attorney, um, I can make a motion tonight if I have a, a reasonable dollar figure that is true, that can be put on the referendum question. First of all, this will cost the city of Hudson nothing to do because it's not a special election. We're having an election on April 3rd. Anyway, there's going to be a primary on February 20th, having to do with, I think, the State Supreme Court justice run. So, the ballots won't be made up until after that primary in any event. Nancy, by what time, by what date do you need the referendum question given to you to have on the ballot?
We've got to make the decision tonight.
It needs to be in the office 42 days before, so that's February 20th.
Okay. Then I'm going to go over, although, um, the discussion and the many, many questions having to do with this project, I think, illustrate the need for, um, hearing from the public about it because this is certainly not a completely baked idea. I think, uh, anybody watching us tonight can tell that. However, we do know certain things. Based on what Dennis Posler has given us from BRA for the approximate cost of water and sewer, given, uh, bids we've already received, we did not accept them, but bids we've already received, uh, for building the, uh, park shelter itself and from the approximate cost that we already know for the security gates, this is a project that's going to cost by approximately $574,000. Now, we already have access to approximately $135,000 of other people's money. Uh, well, let's call it $150,000 because we, I guess, although the mayor had stated at one time, we wanted to spend down our 50 and Rotary's 50 in concert, apparently the monies at about $30,000 that have been spent so far have been the city's and not the Rotary's. And I don't have any issue with that. So, we have $50,000 from the Rotary and we have the maximum of $100,000 from the DNR grant. So, if we take the 574 down by, uh, 150, uh, we're down to $419,000. So, $419,000 is an awful lot of mu, of city money that could be spent elsewhere. And people may have a view about that, and I suspect they do because I've been hearing from a lot of them and you've heard from just a few of them this evening. So, I think that it would be fair to say the referendum question would be, do you wish the city to buy, to build, uh, whatever we want to call it, a riverfront picnic shelter complete with sewer and water for the approximate cost of $400,000, which is conservative?
Well...
What do you, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, you were going to say something.
I was just going to say that it's really too bad we didn't have this referendum before we ever got into defining whether or not we want this particular project. It's really too bad we didn't do it the other way.
I'm with you.
We are getting some opinions and some calls from people, uh, who are concerned about it. Uh, we are also had in the last, I think, council meeting, a room full of, uh, people who were for it, if you recall, primarily a lot of Rotary people. And so, uh, it's really too bad we didn't do it, uh, the other way.
Let me tell you why I'm asking for the referendum. It's because of the way in which this has unfolded. In November, the November 20th meeting, we rejected, didn't reject, we did not accept any of the bids for the picnic shelter, not knowing if there was any funding available for it. Uh, with that having been done, there was at, on the boards at that time, no plan whatsoever for a riverfront picnic shelter. Yet, that didn't stop park board from coming to us December 18th, asking for $145,000 to put in, uh, sewer and water, to be hung from the concrete curbing of the dike road. And, um, I argued vociferously against that. Uh, it was to be completed with a product called HDPE, High Density Polyethylene. Dennis O'Connell sided with me on that, but we lost that vote. Only to find out later on that the state of Wisconsin, and we have to give them credit because, you know, I give the people in Madison the raspberry when they do something that hurts our city, but in this case, they're smarter than we are because the people in Madison already had a code on the books that said, "You can't use that product outside." Um, my own research had told me that it did succumb to ultraviolet light and, uh, disintegrate it, which is why you can't use it outside. So, that's why we're now talking about the cost of trenching it or drilling underneath the, uh, the dike road. Um, in January, I met with the park board to say to them, you know, you've got half of an idea here, which is to build a structure and that's it. You think that the job is done apparently, once you build it, because you have no plans for how you're going to maintain it or how you're going to protect it. And I presented a plan to protect it, to provide security, uh, actually at no cost to the city through a process the DNR would allow, uh, charging for boats at the end of the dike road. I didn't actually even get a chance to finish that, uh, presentation because as soon as I mentioned the word sewer, it was just off and running in a different direction. Then in January, we had, uh, a request to, uh, immediately give $253,000. That's not including engineering costs, uh, for building of the, of the picnic shelter. So, this piecemeal process has made me lose confidence that the park board is willing to go through the proper process. I think we need the citizens of Hudson to tell them and us, we really want this and we want you to find the money, the $400,000 plus extra, or we really don't want this. And I think we need that guidance from them. It's an advisory referendum.
Scott, we're talking about the referendum and whether or not we want to have it. We understand and kind of have had that discussion that you just expressed.
I'm explaining my reasoning for bringing this up.
I understand that.
Well, it's only piecemealed because you're making it piecemealed.
I believe all the, but you know what? I'm not going to get in that conversation with you, Paul, because that's really not to the point.
No, and I'm not going to let you two get in that conversation, okay? Uh, you want to express, uh, in any way, uh, why you're taking that position or, if not, we can go right to the vote.
Can I make a comment first? Uh, Catherine, what kind of, um, is there any precedent that will be set by this, having this referendum? I'm...
I don't think there has to be. I mean, you, the, the council can decide based on the circumstances of this situation that they want to seek input through a referendum process. There's no requirement for a referendum, obviously. Um, it's totally within the discretion of the council. Now, politically, will people say, "Hey, you had a referendum before, let's have a referendum again?" That's, you know, what people do oftentimes. And so, that's, may or may not happen. It's, it's difficult...
Maybe we should ask the representative from North Hudson what she thinks of referendums.
Well, I was going to say, we're, we're bound by the...
Sometimes it's difficult to really get a true picture of people's opinions just by one question on a referendum. The press, and this is not illegal. I mean, this is more of just a kind of judgment call, but it's, it's tough to know exactly what, what their view is by an answer on a referendum.
I don't think we're going to get a, a great outpouring of people at that particular, uh, election because of what you said. It's where the judges...
No, this is the April 3rd election, not the February 20th. I'm talking April 3rd. The February 20th is the primary.
You want to skip the little one?
We can't. Yeah, we couldn't make the little one, even though we wanted to.
Well, you know, we've had four years of opportunity to have public input on this project. It's been in the paper several times.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Our meetings several times.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
You know, I, I don't understand, uh, you know, why we would signal, signal this project for, um, a referendum. I mean, what's next? Fire engines, police cars, um, any other, you know, the bathhouse re-sighting, City Hall, I mean, you could, you could go on up and down the list. I don't understand why, uh, just because you have a, all of a sudden, even though you were initially in for the project and now you have a disdain for it. I don't understand.
Uh, excuse me, don't characterize my feelings with the word disdain. What I have a disdain for is your approach on this.
My approach?
Now...
Gentlemen...
Mr. Mayor, I will address the chair on this. Mr. Mayor, I will address the chair on this. The reason for needing a referendum, I believe, is that not enough information has gotten out, and the Park Board frankly just has not gotten his act together on this, and I want to say, you've got two months now. This is February 5th, April 3rd, there is an election. You will have two months to get the act together and present your vision. Now, Lee and I have a vision that goes far beyond what the Park Board's been talking about, but that's not up for voting here, okay? You need to get your act together, put forth your vision to the people of Hudson, and see whether it sails or not, okay? You simply haven't done that up to this point. And my question about this is, why is the Park Board the only committee whose meetings are not televised?
I don't know, Scott, you've been on the council longer than I have.
There are several. Finance Committee is not. I don't have the answer to that.
Well, Finance Committee is not, I know, but that occurs right before the regular meeting.
Library Board, there are some that are and aren't, I mean, that's...
Well, Library Board's not a...
Let's restrict our discussion to whether or not we wanna have a referendum, not the others.
Yep.
Whether we want it or don't have it, whether we have the money, we don't have the money, we've taken action to find out what that cost is going to be. The real question before us is, do we want to have a referendum? Now, you people are elected to represent the people. Now, we're gonna find out tonight who's gonna represent 'em and who's gonna not have them.
Well, this was, this is gonna be my point, is that as representatives, we, I have an email list, and I try to keep in touch with what people are thinking. And what the referendum is gonna say is whether or not they're thinking the same thing I'm thinking. Isn't this where we make the decision? I mean, I can see a lot of the other questions and comments, too.
But you've made a lot of decisions without a referendum, too.
That's exactly where I was going, is that, no, yes, this does, and I don't, I guess I'm looking at both sides of the issue. I can see where definitely a referendum was gonna give us an answer, but aren't we also elected to represent? And the question that you had about the process, aren't we the final decision makers in that process?
Well, let me tell you about how the process has gone so far. It resulted in December 18th on this council voting to install a sewer pipe, which turns out you couldn't legally do, because we were not given enough facts, because the act wasn't put together by the Park Board, and that's why I'm saying, we need you, in the next two months, to put your vision together and explain it to the people of Hudson, because clearly, even tonight, nobody really understands it.
Well...
The sewer line was what the recommendation was given by the engineers, Scott, which is what any Park Board, or any council, or anybody else would go to for answers.
But we had three proposals on how we're gonna go with that particular sewer rate.
I'm talking about how the process has failed us, I was responding to Lee's comment.
Yeah, and I guess the question...
I just click by one thing, that it is an advisory-only referendum.
We understand.
We understand that.
This council will still make the ultimate vote.
And I guess the, what Scott's asking for, and I think that all of us are asking for, is a detailed project plan. I mean, we definitely have seen pieces and parts of this, and the different costs, and yes, they've been cut...
And we're gonna get that.
Divided and subdivided, but the final answer's gotta be, we need the whole thing. We need, you know, everything from the maintenance, the security costs, to, you know, other opportunities for spending that money, and I just, so I'm kinda going back and forth on the referendum, because we don't even, I think what you're trying to push for is, by asking for the referendum, the Park Board will then provide us a detailed project plan, which then we can post in the newspaper, we can post every place to say, "Now, do you agree or disagree with this?"
Exactly.
But without that information, like you, like Catherine had said, one question on a ballot isn't, is gonna come up with an answer, but not an educated answer.
Then why don't we have those projects in front of us and have a public hearing? Why a referendum? We're opening up too many...
I don't think you're opening up any candidates at all, because you will still make the ultimate vote.
Well, I don't wanna have to start voting on having everybody, as your previous argument, on voting for fire trucks, or this.
That wasn't my argument, it's somebody else's, but...
That was Jack.
I don't wanna restrict any public opinion, whether or not we have a referendum, but in 14 years at this chair, we've had the people sitting around this table that could make the decision based on the input they get as alter persons, and they make decision accordingly. Now, if we don't think the Park Board has done a good job, then we ought to be approaching that in that particular fashion, okay? I do think that we've taken the best step to finding out what the bottom line is going to be regarding the costs. We may have to do some maintenance and police protection out there, but I see after we've got the new bids, that that's all we need, and I think that we should make our decisions based on that input.
I just wanna say, I, like Lee, I've been going back and forth on the referendum, because I tend to support democracy, you know, whenever we can have it, and I agree with Scott that we do need citizens to tell us what to do, but I think they have that avenue right now. They have our phone numbers, they have our email addresses, they know where we live. I think, in that way, there's a better way to actually communicate to us what they want, instead of just checking yes or no on a ballot. They can ask us questions, we can come back and find out those answers, and by putting out bids that we're gonna maybe be doing tonight, and looking at the new specs, we do have time to get the input, to get that full picture, what we want, and what everyone deserves to know exactly what the costs are, and I think at that point, since we have to make the ultimate decision anyway, we can do it in that manner.
Well, I think we're missing one part, that's a pretty important part of this entire mix of ingredients, and that is, the bids that we're gonna be putting out are for construction, the physical construction. They do not, the bids do not in any way and cannot address the feelings I've had, and the opinions I've had from people in the community, of what is going to happen in the structure once it's there. There is no provision, there is no vision for protecting it or maintaining it, and as has been mentioned by people in the audience tonight, there, once it's built, what's gonna happen? It's gonna degrade. That's our history with these things. Unless we find a way to protect it and to maintain it, these bids cannot address that question, and that's the question that people have on their minds besides the initial cost.
Well, what about...
We're working on that.
Maintenance and police...
Well, you know, I'm not ready to buy that, excuse me, I wanna answer that, because for four months, you've been, you know, kinda messing around with this, and now you're gonna tell me, "Well, we've been bad, but now we're gonna become good," and I no longer believe it, Paul.
Now, four months you've been messing around with this, we have been working on, and have had discussions about security out there, and we plan to have more discussions than we have planned.
Gentlemen, we're above that, we're talking about whether or not we want the input and we wanna referen...
I understand that, but he keeps taking shots.
I call the question. I think we're through discussing, I call the question.
Well, let's determine, no, no. We're not gonna open up anymore.
I'm gonna support Councilmember Morrisette.
Well, you can, you can do that, or you have. I wanna make sure we all have our voice in it before we call the question. Is everybody ready to vote on that, or not?
I was trying to figure out how to answer Scott's question, in that when the project is brought forward, that it has a complete plan to it, and that we, as a council, can lay out the definitions of what that plan has to include.
Well, you're on the safety committee, and you guys are looking at whether or not...
On the safety piece of it, that's true, yes.
That you're gonna look at patrolling, you're gonna look also, from the Park Board, on the cost of maintaining that.
That's correct.
Untotoads in that area.
What?
Untotoads in the river in that area. It's not just regular swimming water, there is river undertows in that area. That's why we get so many drownings.
Well, I understand that, and people have been swimming there for about 50 years, so it's a little different than Brown's Beach. I admit. Are we ready now?
Do we restate the motion?
The motion is to deny the referendum, advisory referendum.
All in favor to deny? Aye. Looks like it's four to two. You wanna raise your hands?
I don't know.
What is it, three and three? God, you guys always get me in there, don't you? As I mentioned before, I don't like to restrict people's opinions, but I think you guys are elected to represent the people. I don't think you need that additional input. I think you ought to rely on the phone calls, the opinions, the talking that you get daily, and even if you have to make some phone calls to find out what these opinions are, I vote also to deny, even though originally it was my idea, but I thought it should come before we went out for bids on this. Motion's carried. Considering authorizing B.R.A. to prepare plans and specs and advertise for bids for the water-sewer utilities to the Riverwalk project, here we are.
Move to approve.
Here we go. Is there a second? Yes, aye, I second. Want to give us the executive report?
Well, for plans and specs, we've got a couple of different options, and I guess one of the, the recommendation is to go with the boring, the directional boring.
Underground?
Underground, under the, under the street where it's protected.
And this would go down the middle of that particular walkway?
Correct.
Or somewhere in that area?
In that general area, yes.
Can I ask a question? That estimated cost is already more than what we budgeted for.
Right.
So we still gonna go with that option, or are you gonna go with the cheaper option?
It's the best option, it gives it the best protection, and I guess, it's, but it's the estimate, and again, it's much the same as the balance of these, and I guess, if so directed, we can, I guess it can be bid with alternates, and that probably is, you know, is the way to go, take a look at, you know, various alternates with it, but the base bid would be the directional boring.
Could we bid for the, all three approaches, or what?
Yeah, we should.
Dennis?
You can do whatever you'd like.
I thought that's what we were doing.
Yeah, that's what I thought, too.
Yeah, there's multiple approaches, and, I mean, I think the thing is, the holding tank method is not the way to go, for a number of reasons.
Well, if we go holding tanks, we might as well have satellites out there.
Exactly.
But I thought, what we said earlier was that we were gonna bid for all six approaches, and then we can mix and match the finances that we have to figure out what works and what doesn't.
Well, change that by motion and say we go for all three, bid for all three approaches.
All right, I request that we bid for all three approaches.
You mean all six?
Is that okay with the original motion?
There's six different approaches, right?
That's what I thought we were doing.
Yeah.
And that, the cost does not change for the bid, is that correct? Or are you gonna charge us six times?
Oh, he woke up!
In all fairness, I would hope you wouldn't expect us to repair six alternatives with no additional cost.
Would it be six times the $3,100 we're talking about?
The cost of rebidding is for plans that are already done, so these are repairing new plans.
How many, two more? Two more? Would it be two more?
There are no plans prepared for the utilities yet, my understanding. There's plans, rebidding was for the picnic shelter.
Right, this isn't for, this is new...
This is all new.
Well, then, we should consider, is it six, or is it four, or what?
Correct.
It'd be viable if you could make that decision before authorizing...
Dennis, can you give us any ballpark figures of what we're, what choices we have here?
There's six options, but there's two themes. One is running sewer and water out there, that's three options for that one, and then the other is holding tank, three options, two options.
And how close are the numbers you have on the sheet here? These aren't bids, these are guesses?
These are engineering estimates, based on the cost.
So should we take the, should we take the two lowest-priced ones and send those out for bid, then it's two, rather than six?
I think the first thing you need to decide is the method. Do you wanna even consider the holding tank option or not? If you don't, then omit those three options.
Well, the holding tank option is a lot less expensive. It also provides us funding left over from the 145 we decided earlier to allocate to other projects.
But here's the thing, with the holding tanks, and I think our engineer will back me up, let's say we have a busy weekend, and suddenly, the holding tanks are full. They're overflowing, we have to shut everything down, we have to get some emergency equipment out there to empty it, is that a good option to consider?
Well, what do we do now? There's outhouses out there now.
Yeah.
When they get full on a busy weekend, what do we do?
I don't think we've ever run into that, Jim, have we?
Well, holding tank would be bigger than a...
It all depends.
Well, yeah, okay, but it's bigger, and we also have a water source out there where somebody can turn the sink on, let the sink run.
So we can do that, that'll happen.
Whatever, I mean, there's, you know, there's substantial opportunity for more water out there with that, I mean, you're...
I always brought it up, because that is a situation that could occur.
Well, we, I think we can easily get rid of two options, which is either holding tank or sewer line, we don't want anything strapped to the curb.
Oh, I agree.
So there's two gone, we're down, out, and four.
The strapping and the holding tank.
Yeah, nothing strapped to the curb, whether it's sewer line or holding tank, right?
Well, if you eliminate the holding tank, you eliminate the bottom three options. On the memo from Dennis.
He's talking about option one and option four.
Yeah. Nothing strapped to the concrete.
I think we should look at options two, three, and six, is what we should look at.
What's six?
Six is the holding tank that's directionally drilled under the road with the water line.
And why would we, why would we choose option two versus option three? Because option three, in their guesstimate, is smaller, so if you, what's the, what's the advantage of two, water cut in under the roadway, or directional drilling, when directional drilling's cheaper?
Actually, Jim, you want a directionally drilled, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so...
We're looking at options three and six then.
Right, three and six, so you could scratch two, and you could just say, "Three and six is two bids we're looking for."
Do you want an estimated cost?
Have we got a consensus?
Yeah, and then we need a guesstimate, because we already voted on, on what, $40, $3,100, right? So this would be an increase in that amount?
No, that's for rebidding a project of existing plans, is, we're now just asking us to start repairing plans and specs and structure.
So do you have an idea of a cost you might give to us now?
Seven or eight percent of the, 68% of the other construction cost is a typical industry standard for getting plans inspected.
Well, these costs we have here do not have the engineering and legal administrative built, like the 152, 977 is really 191, 221, per your figures that you gave us. So we're talking $191,000 for option three, and approximately $100,000 for option six. So we're talking another eight, $16,000, $14,000 to bid these two options, or can we bid two options on, based on one plan for $6,000, $7,000, $8,000?
You can bid two options on one set of plans.
Plans.
With, you know, eight, seven, eight, nine percent somewhere in between. It's not, you indicate that these are construction cost estimates, that is correct, there's no engineering or inspection cost in these numbers, that's why I'm saying add a certain percentage for budgeting purposes.
Okay, so we're talking maybe nine percent, if we use the lower number of 152 instead of 191, we're still talking $14,000?
Correct.
So I have a question, outside-the-box question. When I've done engineering with other firms, you can actually go to the firm that'll do the bid for you, and they will provide the engineering service, because they want the job. Is it possible that Jim could outline what we want here, and the bidding firms could then do their engineering and provide it back to us, as part of their bid process, rather than using a third firm for engineering?
You tend to see that on some of the design-build, you know, building-type stuff. I guess I am, have had serious dealing with that on civil, heavy construction work, so do you have any, Dennis?
The other time we really see design-build projects are larger buildings, or buildings, or DOT-type projects.
The reason I ask is, we're talking about, you know, $150,000 here, and somebody may be willing to, I'm looking at, how do I get rid of the 14 grand and get an answer? That's the bottom line.
Part of the thing is, is regardless of what you do, there's, there's something in there, you're gonna get, you're gonna pay for it one way or the other, whether it's built-in...
Well, if, right, if their bid is accepted, it's part of their bid process.
Right, but my point is, is if it comes in, it probably isn't gonna come in at 153, it's gonna come in at 160-something, that those engineering costs are gonna be recovered in their bid, they're, they're not gonna eat those. I mean, you're, it's, you're gonna, you're gonna pay for it one way or the other, whether you see it as a line item, as engineering, or whether it's just, you know, factored into the per-foot cost of pipe, or whatever.
Well, let's get a consensus on what approach we want Dennis to take. You had a suggestion of two...
Two and six.
Three and six.
Three and six, that's right.
Does everybody... Is everybody agreed to that?
And what was, when we said the $3,100, that was just for which number?
That was for a different project.
That was for the shelter.
I'm sorry, I quoted that number, which was incorrect of me to do so.
Oh, this is just a shelter, yes.
The previous question.
Yep.
I want to bring up once again the folly of spending $14,000 to get specs on something that we already know we don't have enough money to build.
And that's why I was leaning towards, do we just go with getting option six bid, which would provide us enough money in the.
Yeah, you'll save about $86,000 with option six over option three. But again, those are just engineering estimates.
You're going to save that on the front end.
Well, we're talking about options three and six, right? Are you ready?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close? No. Two noes? Motion's carried. Let's go to consider authorizing public work staff to prepare plans and specs for security gates to the Riverwalk picnic shelter and as an alternate to the bathhouse project. Jim, you're going to prepare the plans and specs for that one?
Right, we're going to work with park board. We've looked at a couple of different things. We have pictures that we're going to be bringing to the park board meeting tomorrow night to discuss some options. Once we get some guidance from them, we would intend to proceed with preparation of plans and specs for the picnic shelter as well as for the bathhouse, to be done in conjunction with those projects.
What is your pleasure? We have to authorize them to go ahead and do that.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion's carried. Now, have we covered everything except, we're going to go into closed session. Communications and items for future agendas, any alterperson? You know, once we do get those bids, is it, are we able to have a public hearing on that for the project? Once we have the firm project?
Could we do that, Madam?
Sure, that's, I mean, you can seek whatever kind of input the council allows.
Maybe that's the best way to do it. Let's get the bottom line, let's get the dollars, let's have a public hearing so we can hear from people that you represent and I represent, and we'll go from there.
I firmly support that, because that way we get a total plan from park board.
An immediate response of the people.
Yes.
Pro and con. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Probably didn't even have to do that. City attorney? City administrator?
Nope.
You've got a call. Denny?
Thursday night, we have plant commission. Steve Affleckbacher from Aler's Associates will be at the plant commission meeting to talk about tax increment financing. It'll be about a half hour, a 40-minute meeting. It is a televised public meeting, so if you don't have, if council members don't have an opportunity to attend, we're welcoming you to attend. This is in replace or for the tax increment finance workshop we talked about. Steve can come Thursday. Plant commission wants to address this issue as quickly as possible.